for a quorum. However, we have a lot of people here as you see, and we have a number of presentations. I want to start by welcoming to the council chamber the Speaker of the State Assembly, Bob Hertzberg, who has offered to take Ron Deaton into custody. That's what all these high-powered discussions here are about. We do have a number of presentations this morning. Is Mayor Reardon here yet? No. They told me he was coming at 10 o'clock. All right, well then we'll start with somebody else. Mr. Padilla, are you ready to go?
Good morning, Madam President. Thank you. Colleagues, this isn't the L.A. Kings. This isn't the Stanley Cup. They got close. But it is with great pride and excitement that I introduce to you the city champion wrestling team from San Fernando High School. It was just a couple of months ago that I believe the band and drill team from San Fernando High School was here, also city champions in that category. And this is part of our ongoing commitment to recognize what's good about Los Angeles and what's good about young people and showcasing the successes of our high school students within the city of Los Angeles. Behind me stands the wrestling team from the Northeast Valley that took out the three-time champion, fourth-time champion El Camino High School, another Valley High School, all in friendly competition, friendly competition I have to say. But this is the first time in 10 years that San Fernando High School has been the city champions when it comes to wrestling at San Fernando, just as with El Camino. We value not only success in athletics but success in academics as well. And you can stand assured that the wrestlers standing behind me are just as successful in the classroom as they are on the mat. I want to call forward at this point in time the coach, Mike Castillo, to say a few words and introduce the wrestlers and their weight class.
Jose Canaro, heavyweight, second in the city.
Are we giving the certificates in fact?
Oh, about the...oh, okay. Well, we've never been here before. My captain here would like to present Mr. Padilla, a former alumnus, 1990, when I first started. I know he's a baseball player, but we'd like to make him an honorary wrestler. So we got a little memento of our thanks, and we're very proud of him as a councilman and great politician. Thank you.
I just wanted to honor Mr. Padilla for, you know, supporting our district, L.A. You know, he came from our high school. He's like, he comes around, he helps us out, he recognizes us, he does a lot for us, you know. I just want to thank him, and yeah, he's an honorary member of our wrestling team now. And you know, anytime you see him wearing his jacket, just think of the city champions, L.A. city champions from San Fernando. That's all I got to say.
So I want to thank you guys and congratulate you guys once again. And anybody interested in visiting the trophy, I'm sure it'll be presented well in the office at San Fernando High School. We do have certificates for each of the wrestlers, champions and top finishers in each of their weight categories. But this is just one. We'll present the rest in the back. Congratulations on behalf of the city of Los Angeles on being part of the San Fernando High School's 2001 Los Angeles City Championship Team, which you do is a great representation not only for the high school and for the Valley but the entire city of Los Angeles. Congratulations.
I understand...am I back on? I understand Mayor Reardon has arrived? Well, that's what they told me. Are you here? Has anybody seen our mayor? Now, he's busy. He's got a lot of places to be.
We don't have anything close to a quorum here. We have five people here. We need five more for a quorum. However, we have a lot of people here, as you see, and we have a number of presentations. And he's still here. Yes, he's still here. I want to start by welcoming to the council chamber the Speaker of the State Assembly, Bob Hertzberg. Who has offered to take Ron Deaton into custody. That's what all these high-powered discussions here are about. We do have a number of presentations this morning. Is Mayor Reardon here yet? No. They told me he was coming at 10 o'clock. All right? Well, then we'll start with somebody else. Mr. Padilla, are you ready to go?
Good morning, Madam President. Thank you, colleagues. This isn't the L.A. Kings. This isn't the Stanley Cup. They got close. But it is with great pride and excitement that I introduce to you the city champion wrestling team from San Fernando High School. It was just a couple of months ago that I believe the band and drill team from San Fernando High School was here, also city champions in that category. And this is part of our ongoing commitment to recognize what's good about Los Angeles and what's good about young people and showcasing the successes of our high school students within the city of Los Angeles. Behind me stands the wrestling team from the Northeast Valley that took out, was it the three-time champion? Fourth-time champion, El Camino High School, another Valley high school, all in friendly competition. Friendly competition, I have to say. But this is the first time in 10 years that San Fernando High School has been the city champions when it comes to wrestling at San Fernando, just as with El Camino. We value not only success in athletics but success in academics as well. And you can stand assured that the wrestlers standing behind me are just as successful in the classroom as they are on the mat. I want to call forward at this point in time, the coach, Mike Castillo, to say a few words and introduce the wrestlers and their weight class.
Thank you. Sorry. Oh, well. Jose Canaro, heavyweight, second in the city.
Are we giving him the certificates in fact? Want to say?
Oh, about the, oh, okay. Well, we've never been here before. My captain here would like to present Mr. Padilla, a former alumnus, 1990, when I first started. I know he's a baseball player, but we'd like to make him an honorary wrestler.
All right.
So we got a little memento of our thanks, and we're very proud of him as a councilman and great politician. Thank you.
I just wanted to honor Mr. Padilla for, you know, supporting our district, L.A. You know, he came from our high school. He's like, he comes around, he helps us out, he recognizes us, he does a lot for us, you know. I just want to thank him. And yeah, he's an honorary member of our wrestling team now. And you know, anytime you see him wearing his jacket, just think of the city champions, L.A. City Champions from San Fernando. That's all I got to say.
So I want to thank you guys and congratulate you guys once again. And anybody interested in visiting the trophy, I'm sure it'll be presented well in the office at San Fernando High School. We do have certificates for each of the wrestlers, champions and top finishers in each of their weight categories, but this is just one. We'll present the rest in the back. Congratulations on behalf of the city of Los Angeles on being part of the San Fernando High School's 2001 Los Angeles City Championship Team, which you do is a great representation not only for the high school and for the Valley but the entire city of Los Angeles. Congratulations.
I understand, am I back on? I understand Mayor Reardon has arrived? Well, that's what they told me. Are you here? Has anybody seen our mayor? Now, he's busy. He's got a lot of places to be, but I, hey, Amanda? Okay, now what? He's not here. Okay, he's not here. Well, we had figured that out. All right? So Mr. Padilla actually has another presentation, but he's busy taking pictures. So I'm now going to move to Ms. Chick. Ms. Chick, are you ready to do your presentations?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to ask the Resnicks to come up and join me, please. These are two very special people, colleagues. The Los Angeles-based organization called the Lily Claire Foundation was founded by Mr. and Mrs. Resnick. It's an organization that's dedicated to helping children and families affected by neurogenic birth defects. The Lily Claire Foundation was formed in 1998 by Keith and Leslie "Lit" Resnick of Santa Monica, following the death of their six-month-old daughter, Lily Claire Resnick, from complications of a neurogenic birth disorder known as Williams Syndrome. Out of the ashes of their tremendous grief, Keith and Leslie rose to action and renewed purpose about helping others and started a brand-new and incredibly effective foundation from the ground up. In just three short years, this foundation has opened a family resource center at UCLA, forged a close working relationship with the campus's genetic research program, and will soon open a vocational training center for adults at the University of Nevada, Las Vegas. Today, thanks to the dedicated and tireless work of this foundation and these two people, kids living with neurogenic disorders and their families have a place where they can obtain resources and even more importantly, where they can receive love and support and where hope and strength can be nurtured. The Lily Claire Foundation deserves our recognition and our utmost praise, and I want to, on behalf of the council, present this certificate of recognition and congratulations on an important job well done. There's so many terrible diseases that need attention and need work, and thank you for bringing this to our attention, but more importantly, to bringing resources. Congratulations for the success.
Just very briefly, thank you so much, Councilmember Laura Chick and L.A. City Council for recognizing the work of the Lily Claire Foundation. And our Lily Claire UCLA Family Resource Center welcomes any and every parent, family, and child to come on down and receive support services from us. Thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Special people. And more special people, in a few weeks, I'll be having another team from this school. But right now, today, I'm recognizing some outstanding athletes, as my colleague, Councilmember Padilla, did. If I could have the El Camino Girls Basketball Team join me up here, please. We're going to have three teams from El Camino. This is the first of the three, and then the girls' soccer team and the boys' soccer team. But as the girls' basketball team comes forward, I'm going to tell you about the achievements of these fine young women. Gather round. And I hope not all of you are graduating seniors. Most of you are?
Yeah.
Uh-oh. Five of them are. Doesn't matter. We'll find, juniors are strong. I just heard that. Okay. The appearance of this girls' basketball team only drives home the point, colleagues, that the students of Los Angeles, and in this case, especially the students of the West San Fernando Valley and El Camino, are unmatched in athletics and in academics. Today, we're honoring the girls' varsity basketball team for winning the city's invitational championship. This year's record is a very impressive 17 to 7. Seventeen to seven. Special congratulations goes to the team for outscoring their opponents in the playoffs by a margin of 15 points. Team captains, if you'd raise your hands, Karen Shun and Victoria Wong. Yep. Thank you, ladies. And coaches, do we have Lori Chandler here today? Lori, I'm looking at you. What do I know? You could be one of the players. Would you like to say a few words about your team?
Sure.
Okay, great.
We'd like to thank the L.A. City Council for recognizing us today and Councilmember Mrs. Chick. And we're just honored to be here. These are great kids on the court, but even more outstanding young ladies off the court, and I'm just so super proud of them. Thank you very much.
Fantastic. Thank you, colleagues. Thank you, girls. Thank you very much. Okay. Didn't even have girls' basketball team in my day. Girl soccer, El Camino, come on up. Another city championship, El Camino Girls Soccer. El Camino Girls Soccer played in and won the championship, and this is their first, but certainly not the last, the first city championship. They beat their rival, and if Mr. Burnson were here, I'd grin straight at him. They beat their rival, Chatsworth High, three times this year. The first, this is the first time that El Camino has an all-city MVP. What is MVP? Most Valuable Player. On the team, you can tell I'm a sports fan. Maytal Schwarz, who is also the team captain. They also, this team held the first-ever Camino Kick Soccer Clinic for young girls in the community. So they're already knowing how to give back and how to role model and how to mentor. And that event will now become an annual event. They've also had an outstanding year on the field, but, again, excellent in the classroom. These are balanced, well-rounded in academics and athletic achievement, young women. Seventeen of the 19 athletes are scholar athletes. Several girls earned above a 3.85. Raise your hands, please, when I call your names. Jamie Doyen at a 4.025. Becca Moss, the same. Megan Porter, a four-point. Nicole Freeman, a four-point. Lauren Moss, 3.85. That's incredible. Congratulations. Is the coach, Scott Holloway, here? Would you like to say a few words? Tell us how you do it.
I let them do what they want to do, and they came to win this year. So I'm very proud with what they did, and thank you so much for taking the time to recognize us. We really appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll go in the back afterwards. Thank you. It's a smart man. He lets them do what they want to do, and they win. And last, and definitely not least, we're going to have gender mix. The boys' soccer team from El Camino High School, please. Pretty impressive to have three champion teams from the same school. You were very patient. Thank you very much. Gentlemen to the end. These fine young men have won the second city championship in three years for El Camino Soccer. This year's record, wow, 27-3, and ended the season with a 14-game winning streak. That's like magic. They had 19-season shutouts, including a 1-0 victory over University in the finals. The team worked extremely hard, especially from September to March, to maintain their number-one rank. Here are just some of the season highlights. They won the Iolani Classic in Hawaii. They won the Royal Tournament in Simi Valley. They earned the West Valley League title and the city title. Team captains, Zachary Feldman and Jan Falkstein? Falkstein? How many are graduating seniors? Oh, God. You better come back and volunteer some time. Coach David Hesse, are you here? Would you like to say a few words? Yeah, they're smart, they're good athletes, and they have a good sense of humor.
I'd like to thank the city council and Mrs. Chick for recognizing us today. Their athletic, their athletic ability speaks for itself, but these guys, I have two Valedictorians here, four or five kids going to UCLA, Irvine, Michigan, Colorado, Bucknell. So these guys are very good in the classroom as well, and I want to compliment them on that as well. Thank you.
Who's going to Michigan? Okay. All right. You made the right choice. Thank you, colleagues. This is a tribute not only to these fine young people but to our L.A. USD school system. Thank you very much. All right. Mr. Padilla, did you want to do your other presentation? It's been informed that the mayor has to go give a commencement address in 20 minutes, so we're working out an arrangement so that the awards will get presented, but they just told me, if you're ready to go, I'll do it right now. They just told me that you don't have enough time. Maybe, maybe what you want to do in the interest of time is make the general remarks, and we'll give out the certificates later.
Is Michigan the best university in the world?
Yes, it is.
I agree.
Are there any dispute? This is one of the few things we have in common, Dick.
Good morning. Could I bring all the awardees up here now? I have around me this morning exceptional city employees who have given so much of their time, their talent, and their energy in the service of our city. They represent all of our city employees who are the best government employees in the world, right? Together, we have created a Los Angeles that I believe is the capital city of the new century. These 15 outstanding employees are examples of the very, very best. So it's my great honor and privilege, along with the city council, to introduce to you the Year 2000 Career Service Award recipients. Now, as I call your names, I think we'll do one picture at a time. It's easier, as we do.
Why don't you call out the names before? Okay. Darvall? Okay. Okay. Next one? Yolanda? Deborah? Deborah? Hi. Michael? Frank the Bowler? Here. Israel Lee? Michael? And Annette? Chris Ennis? And Pop Campbell? And Tony Reister? Bob Bider? Dylan Moran? Ken Thatcher? Victoria White? Okay, congratulations, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and again, congratulations to all of the recipients this morning. This time, the chair recognizes Council President Galanter for a presentation.
Am I lost? No, my people are lost. Oh, I got a whole bunch of people. Okay, you're the one I'm going to get to give this to. How are you? Hi.
How are you?
Good morning. Wait, we're having our perennial traffic jam here. Are these our guys or their guys? Their guys, okay. Mr. President, if you don't mind, I'm going to wait till things quiet down a little bit back here. Because I want you all to hear this. Members of the council and members of the public, it's my pleasure today to recognize the Los Angeles Police Revolver and Athletic Club, LAPRAC, if you can say that right. You got to think up another name for this, guys. That doesn't abbreviate very well. Something that goes POP or something like that. The reason that we have asked the members of the Los Angeles Police Revolver and Athletic Club to come in today is that this is a group that's been around for over 60 years to maintain the history and traditions at the world-renowned Los Angeles Police Academy, which, of course, most of us have visited at one time or another. They do, essentially, they organize activities and continue the skills training that allows police officers to have a chance off-duty to get to know each other and to maintain their professional skills, their educational skills, their sanity, because it's a tough job, and you need, you need some time off-duty when you're not looking over your shoulder all the time to be able to remember that this is, the LAPD is, is a part of a larger city family, but it is itself a family, as we learn every time somebody is injured or worse still, killed in the line of duty. And one of the activities sponsored by the LAPRAC is an annual run which is dedicated to preserving the memory of those who've lost their lives protecting the people of Los Angeles. This run is going to take place this Saturday, tomorrow. Tomorrow morning. Tomorrow morning in my district. And it is in memory this year of Officer Robert Mata, who lost his life during the year 2000. So we would be doing this under any circumstances, but we particularly wanted to take the occasion to honor the memory of Officer Mata and also, and others who've been injured and killed in the line of duty, and also to thank the Los Angeles Police Revolver and Athletic Club for their ongoing work to sustain the morale and the skills and the family feeling of the Los Angeles Police Department. So I'm going to present this to Sergeant Mike Sayer, and we're joined by Commander Pasinger, representing the chief, and a number of other members of the club. Mike, let me give you this first. And do you want to talk first, or we let the brass talk first?
Always the brass.
Always the--
Just a few words. On behalf of the Chief of Police and the entire Los Angeles Police Department, I'd just like to take this opportunity to offer my congratulations and appreciations to the Board of LAPRAC. Not only do they provide opportunity in terms of training and athletics to the members of the organization, but I think more importantly, what they provide and what they bring is a sense of stability to the community. The explorers and countless other young people throughout the city of Los Angeles, they use that and have used it, and I hope they continue to use it, as a haven for enjoying themselves, to help learn the history and the beauty of the city of Los Angeles. So for all these things and for so many others, we offer our appreciation and congratulations to LAPRAC. Thank you.
Okay, Sergeant, you're on.
Thank you, Ms. Galanter. And what we have here today for you is the Relay Shirt, and on the back, on the badge of honor, is all the names of the fallen officers. And our most recent addition, of course, is Officer Robert Mata to our Fallen Hero Badge. And I just want to say that through the wisdom of the City Council to honor these men and women that have fallen in the line of duty and paid the utmost commitment to the city of Los Angeles, we never want to forget them, and that's what this race is about. Even more so than the ones that are on that badge of honor are the ones that are going out every day, day in and day out, knowing that someday, possibly, we could be on that badge as well, and still continuing the work that we do for the city that we love and the people that we hold very near to us. And thank you very much.
I just want to say, as someone who's been rescued by the police and the fire department, that we really appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam President. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Walters for a presentation. As the councilwoman is making her way, Councilman Hernandez, you have an introduction?
If I could just a second. I just want to introduce a journalist student, that's Bianca Mercado. She's here in front of us right now. She's doing a story on the City Council, and if any of the other members would like to go by and give her some words of wisdom or what's going on in the meeting, I think she would appreciate it. She gets 100 points if we-- she gets our quotes.
Terrific. Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Walters.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Councilmembers, I have a presentation today to some very fine city employees, and it involves the historic Unipero Sarah Branch Library. The original historic Unipero Sarah Branch Library of the Los Angeles Public Library was established in 1908 in a rented storefront on West 45th Street. The facility was a delivery station where patrons could browse through the small collection and check out books on the honor system. As its popularity increased, the library added regular hours and finally had a branch building. The branch building that they received was $38,000 to build this branch library at 43rd and Olive Street. And the proposed, the popular branch library continued to serve the community until October 98-- 1987, the Whittier Narrows earthquake damaged the building so badly that it forced its closure. By the following July, the library, temporary library, had opened in a mini mall shopping center. All this time, the original library building was sitting and deteriorating from weather elements, from vandalism, from graffiti, until it became just a real eyesore in the community. We were able to get funds for restoration of this building, and that's why we're honoring the employees here today. But the temporary library, when it burned during the civil unrest, Debbie Allen stepped in, director-choreographer, Debbie Allen stepped in and raised the money to reopen that. And now we have a brand-new Unipero Sarah Library on Main Street. But the old library, the original building, was in dire need of rehabilitation and restoration as opposed to demolishing. The location was just an eyesore in the community, and after various efforts and negotiations, seismic bond money was received for the rehabilitation of this Unipero Sarah Branch Library. And today, I want to honor General Services employees in conjunction with the Bureau of Engineering, who brought this historic facility back to life. And I would hope that all of you would have an opportunity to see it, and what we really should have had for you are before and after pictures, because to look at it before the restoration, one would have thought that nothing in the world could help this building. But something in the world did help this building, and that something was represented by Bureau of Engineering and Department of General Services employees. So sometimes, if you ever wonder why I oppose exempt positions, these people certainly represent a good reason to oppose it. They not only did an outstanding job, they took extra care with the restoration and made it really a beacon light in the community. And it is now being utilized in conjunction with the school across the street, the LA Unified Elementary School, West Vernon Elementary School, to provide some school day and after-school programs, and we're very proud of that. And now, our honorees from the Bureau of Engineering, Pradeep Ranati, who oversaw the historic preservation of the building. And we're very pleased and very proud of the work that he did and all of the others. Next is Peter C., Seth Seraphin. Thank you so much. Thank you, Sandra. Eugene Amimoto. Thank you very much. Saro Desaronian. Desaronian.
That's correct. Thank you.
Did I get it right?
Yes, you did.
Thank you very much. Chris Bassett. Followed by Raymond Guzman. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Roy Teruia. Roy Teruia. Thank you very much. Lance Oishi. Brian Nelson. Brian Nelson is not here, okay. Verdi Gabrielle. Efren Garcia. Thank you. Okay. And Mr. Evit Troyan, the general manager. Where is he? Fine. I'll give you this one for Brian Nelson. Do we have others? Yes, we have others that I want to present to you for workers who could not be here. I don't think all of these go to, do all of these go to engineering? All of them? Okay, all of them go to the Department of Engineering. These are for workers who worked on the project but could not be here today because they're working on other projects. And we want you to know, in engineering and in General Services, just how much we appreciate the great work you've done.
Thank you very much.
All right. And honorees for General Services, Bob Campbell. There's Bob Campbell.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. And Ben LaHodney.
Thank you, Sandra.
Thank you, thank you. All right, is there representative, the general manager a representative for the General Services? Bob Campbell, gotcha. All right, wonderful. Your people did an outstanding job, and they brought this building literally back from almost the dead. And it's fabulous. So, thank you, gentlemen, again. And Mrs. Verdi Gabrielle. Great, great. All right, the next group that I want to honor are a group of community people. Yes, let's give them another hand, the staff another hand. Our group of community people that we want to honor. This is just the beginning of honoring a very special group of people who have worked very hard during the 10 years that I've been in office to assist in the revitalization of Council District Nine. Our first honorees are Jasper and Chiquita Smith, who live in Mr. Ridley Thomas's district, so you probably ought to be up here giving this, but they participate in both districts, and we're very appreciative of their work. Thank you. Carrie Swinney. And what we're saying on these certificates is that it's in recognition of outstanding citizenship and activities enhancing community betterment. And Carrie Swinney is hereby awarded the Certificate of Appreciation for the time, effort, and dedication given to the Ninth Council District over the last 10 years. And so that goes for all of them. And thank you very much. Mary Wong. Mary Wong, who's been very active around the creation of Central Avenue Jazz Park and the Latham Pocket Park. Thank you very much, Mary.
Thank you.
Jake Simmons. Thank you so much. Appreciate all that you've done. Mrs. Mary Knalls. Ms. Knalls is a prodigious worker for the Ninth Council District, and we appreciate it very much. Mary Clark, who's a great block captain and does a wonderful work in the district. Thank you very much. Iona Diggs. Wonderful. Thank you very much for all that you do. Edward Peyton, is he here?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Had a little time to get there.
That's all right. You say where you are.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And last but not least, Elvese Richardson. Is she here? All right, she's not here, but we will see that she gets this. And again, council members, these are people who go out of their way to attend meetings, to be present when something special is going on, to be present when nothing special is going on, to look out for their block clubs, to look out for their communities, to work with the police department, to work with the park department, and so many things, and work with our council office, as we all try to work together and revitalize the Ninth District. And I feel very fortunate to have had the opportunity to work with them and for them, and you'll see many more as the weeks go by. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you, Ms. Walters. You may remember that Mr. Padilla had another presentation, and he was gracious enough to step aside for the mayor and everybody else, so we're now going to call, except Mr. Pacheco, who comes up next. Mr. Padilla's going to do his second presentation, then we have Mr. Pacheco. And while you're coming up there, let's call the roll, since we do have a quorum.
Berdson, Chick, Fuhr, Hernandez, Holden, Miskowski, Pacheco, Padilla, Ridley Thomas, Florence Wax, Walters, and Galanter. 10 members present in the quorum, Madam President.
All right. Mr. Padilla, are you there? You are, all right.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, another announcement this morning. Want to recognize another championship team in the city of Los Angeles. Our very own Information Technology Agency. The members of the ITA that are standing here behind me were part of a very special project that the council asked for several months ago, and that was to revamp our city's website. There's a couple of elements to this. We've heard through budget deliberations, we've heard on the council floor, as projects in various departments call for call center improvements or service request systems, these are laying the foundation for eventually what we will launch as a 3-1-1 e-government project. We know that piece. The other piece is, we know that there's many ways to communicate with one another and to reach the city nowadays and access city services. People still continue to do that in person or on the telephone. People can still reach us via mail or fax, but more and more these days, people are accessing us through the Internet and through the city's webpage. Now, the webpage wasn't more than about three, maybe three and a half years old, and people have sometimes asked, "Well, if the city's website is only three years old, why is there a need to revamp it?" Well, in Internet time, three years is an eternity. And so we asked the department to do the daunting challenge of revamping the website, and we didn't give them any additional monies to do it. So they, on their own, within the departmental budget, took it upon themselves to research the entire country, other cities, other states, to see what other governments were doing with their websites, to take surveys both within the city family and from the public. And what they've been able to put together is truly, truly, a website deserving to be called a Website of the New Millennium. At this point in time, I did want to recognize the entire team. I won't name all of them and present all the certificates, because it was a big team that played a part in this, but I want to bring forward both the general manager, Jesse Juaros, and Cliff Eng, who I believe was the team captain here in this project, and present them the certificates of appreciation on behalf of the city, the council, and the mayor for their great work. And I also believe we have a demonstration set up. Jesse? Want to say a few words, or you want to leave it to Cliff?
Mr. Ridley Thomas wants to say something before you guys get the mic.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the council, I rise to join with Councilman Padilla to salute ITA, having considerable experience and working with that department, knowing what investment that they make and the quality of product that they produce. And to the general manager, we thank you for your, your work, your drive. Madam President, members of the council, what we have is a group of competent, diligent, and creative persons who have taken on this task to produce not only the website for the city, but for our respective offices. And for that, we want to issue a public thanks and affirmation of the quality of the work that you do. Mr. Padilla, we thank you for bringing this forward.
Okay, now it's your turn. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the council, I'm proud to be up here, joined by my great and hard-working team in the Information Technology Agency. This is just some of the members here. I'm also proud to be up here with Councilmember Padilla, who started this initiative off and asked, "What can we do, and how can we do it without any funding?" And I appreciate you brought that up, that we did do that. The goal of the portal project, of course, was to bring personalization and to facilitate communications within the business community as well as within the citizenry, to present relevant news and information to those groups, as opposed to having them go to our website, which has over 20,000 pages on it, and present the information to them, make it easier to find, make it more user-friendly, and we've accomplished that goal. The other beauty about this project is that it is a foundation for the 3-1-1 project. This is just the beginning, this is the start. This is just the beginning, this is the start, and with your further support, we can make this already great site even greater. So again, I want to thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Jesse, and ever the loyal and diligent worker, Cliff isn't here taking accolades, I think he's getting ready for a presentation here.
You mean, we're going to get to see what we're recognizing?
Absolutely, and might I say, this is an item on today's council agenda, so to avoid questions later on, please pay attention.
Please pay attention, because after we're done, we still have two more presentations. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I'll make this quick. One of our, we had a number of design goals in redoing the city's homepage. As we had mentioned before, we had looked at who our target audiences are, and obviously that our main target audiences are residents, and so we had, what we wanted to do is make information easy for them to find, so we have prominent buttons for residents, for businesses, for tourists, and recreation out there. Also, what we wanted to do, if you remember the previous homepage, it was really oriented around departments, and citizens really don't care about departments, they really care about services. So very prominently in the homepage, what we put is a directory of city services. And our goal here really is to make it easier for the citizens, for the public, to find services in an easy way. And I want to, what I want to do is very quickly illustrate that. If you're searching for information about potholes, you could put in a search here for potholes. What it will do is return information. You can see very quickly that for pothole information out there, you can click on it, and it'll give you a description of the pothole, of what, how to get services for a pothole. Also, there's a link here if you, to a online form in order to submit a request electronically to Bureau Street Services in order to have that pothole address, or also a phone number to call on it. So that's one illustration of what we're trying to do in terms of providing better information out to the public. The other thing that we talked about is personalization, and what I'm going to do is illustrate what we're talking about in the future on that. Over here, I put in an address, 13630 Van Nuys Boulevard, and that's, happens to be Councilmember Padilla's district office. When we do a search on it, what it returns is information related to that specific location. So it tells us that Councilmember Padilla is the council member, the county supervisor is Xavier Slaski, the state senator is Richard Alkon. And if you go down further, you can find out that their trash collection day is Friday, they're in the Valley Region of Wreckin' Parks, you can find out who their cable TV provider is, and other information relevant to that location on there. And so that's our overall goal with future phases of it, is to be able to bring relevant information to the citizens, so they don't have to repeatedly search for that information out on our website. Thank you.
Good for you. That's great.
Thank you, Madam President. This does conclude the presentation. I just want to add a last editorial, and that is, we had the brief presentation for the benefit of council members, who I know are always interested in the status of the website, for all city employees and staff, because we constantly refer to it, but also the benefit of having it on Channel 35, so that residents at large and the community at large knows yet of a more effective and efficient way with which to work with the city. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, and thank you all for your hard work and for getting it done. And the chair now recognizes Mr. Pacheco, who has been very patient. Alex, go take the picture in the back and let Nick have the podium.
Madam President, colleagues, this is our second annual effort to bring awareness to the community of individuals who suffer from being deaf or hard of hearing. We're celebrating Deaf Awareness Day today here in the council and part of Deaf Awareness Month. And so I want to start out by first bringing up a young woman who currently is sharing her time in Bull Heights, where she lives, and also where she's living at school, at the California School for the Deaf in Riverside, which opened in 1953 with an enrollment of 56 students, and currently is the largest residential school for the deaf in the United States. The California School for the Deaf in Riverside serves students from San Luis Obispo to the Mexican border, has dormitory housing available for students to live outside the local area, like Maria Del Carmen Jimenez. She is one of, is one of three special schools operated by the California Department of Education, and it's accredited by the Conference of Educational Administrators, Straders Serving the Deaf. It's internationally recognized for its leadership in the deaf community. Maria Del Carmen Jimenez is, for the next two years, Miss CSDR, or California School for the Deaf. She is 17-year-olds, 17-years-old, and a 10th grade student at the school. She was judged, or the competition was judged, in a variety of categories, including academics, talent, a private interview, and onstage interview. There were five other high school students competing for the position. All participants are expected to be a positive role model and active in the school activities. In July of this year, Carmen will compete for Miss Deaf California 2001. So at this time, I would like to present to Maria Del Carmen Jimenez a congratulations on behalf of the city of Los Angeles for having achieved the Miss California, excuse me, not Miss California, Miss California School for the Deaf in Riverside. So I'm part of the city of Los Angeles and Council District 14. I want to present this to you, Maria. Is someone going to interpret for her? Does she want to say anything?
I'd like to say thank you to the council for giving me this. I want to say thank you to the council for giving me the opportunity to come here today, and I want to thank my sponsor, Erica Wettler, and my family for supporting me through this. You know, without them, I don't know what I would do. Thank you very much. And I want to thank Councilmember Pacheco.
As you know, the Greater Los Angeles Council on Deafness is located in Eagle Rock, so I want to bring up two individuals, Richard Ray and Jorge Velazquez. Richard Ray is an ADA compliance officer with the city of Los Angeles. Specifically, we want to thank him for the services that he delivers regarding the impact that the lives of the deaf and hard-of-hearing individuals encounter here in the city of Los Angeles. He is a person with tremendous amount of energy, represents the statewide constituent agency on the Deaf and Disabled Telecommunications Administrative Committee, where he volunteers his time to advocate for equal access on behalf of this special population. Jorge Velazquez is an artist, designer, and ad executive, who utilizes his artistic expertise and creative talents with one very big heart to volunteer his skills assisting local and statewide organizations. For the past 17 years, both Richard and Jorge have volunteered their incredible talents to GLAD's Children's Holiday Gathering by designing and building their sets, costumes, and working with the program during the children's chorus each and every year. Most recently, one of the projects included doing similar duties, volunteering for sister agencies to GLAD. Richard and Jorge have been instrumental in improving the quality of life for the deaf and hard-of-hearing at GLAD, which serves more than 60,000 people annually through its main headquarters in Eagle Rock. So on behalf of the city of Los Angeles and my council office, I'd like to present Richard Ray and Jorge Velazquez, each a certificate of commendation for their great work on behalf of this special population. Jorge has passing on speaking. Does Richard want to say anything?
Obviously, I have to put down the commendation, because I can't sign with my hands full, just like hearing people can't talk with their mouths full. Same principle applies. But I would like to thank you and the members of the council, Madam President as well, for this accommodation, and also to Mr. Pacheco. Really, it's an honor to accept this accommodation on behalf of the deaf community that we work with. And also, I want to thank the Department on Disability for their tremendous support in my career, working with different programs and projects in the city. So thank you very much.
Also, for the record, we were going to recognize UPS, United Parcel Service, for having such an aggressive program to work with the deaf and hard-of-hearing. We're unable to locate the representative right now, so we won't do that presentation, but they should also be acknowledged. Now I want to move on to another group, so I want to bring up the Wilson High School Varsity Cheer Squad. And so this is, this must be Ali USD Day here in the.
Maybe they can cheer us on. We still have an agenda. Don't anybody forget that. No, no, I know better than that. I was just hoping to get the cheerleaders to help us along.
I want to first acknowledge Cindy Varela, the Executive Assistant from Councilmen's of Orange's office, for helping us put this together. I understand she has a special connection to the team. Let me first start by saying that the cheerleading squad competed at the Golden State Spirit Association's California Cheer Classic at Redondo Beach and came in fifth place, with the Cheerleaders of America Regional Competition and came in first place. United Spirit Association Regionals at Canyon Springs High School, Moreno Valley, and came in first place, and also competed following major state competitions. The Cheerleaders of America West Championship at UC Irvine and came in first place. Cheerleaders of America Nationals in Jackson, Florida, and came in fourth place out of more than 26 teams. And the United Spirit Association National Championship at the Anaheim Convention Center and came in eighth place out of 28 teams. I have certificates for all of the individuals, and I know we're tight on time, so I will personally deliver them in the back room out of courtesy to my colleagues, so we will get those done. But let me at least bring up Gus Rodriguez, who can then introduce the captain of the cheerleading team. But Gus Rodriguez is the coach for the cheerleading team, so Gus, or do you want to have the captain speak? And Ms. Williams. And Ms. Williams, come on up.
Madam President, and members of the council, and Mr. Pacheco, we'd like to thank you very much for having us here. We are very proud of the young ladies, because we feel that cheerleaders are not only model students, but they're also athletes, and we're very proud of them. And we thank you for letting us be here.
That's it? Okay.
We're very happy to have you. Congratulations.
Who's your captain?
Well, we have our, while we have, we, they're all considered captains at this point, but we have seniors, and I'll go through them. Our senior is Crystal Castillo, Claudia Moreno, and then the rest of the ladies, I'll go really quickly. Alyssa Gonzalez, Harmony Rodriguez, Samantha Diaz, Crystal Varela. Behind Crystal and Claudia is Patty Evangelista, Donna Sanchez, Karina Hernandez, Lang Lim, Erica Madrid, and Alejandra Garcia. And Gus Rodriguez is my coach-choreographer, and we have our assistant principal, Gabriel
So let us, in, out of respect for the council.
Let's have one good cheer.
Let's have.
I want to get this council meeting going right.
Thank you, Madam President, and I will deliver the certificates in the back room. Thank you, though.
Yeah, come on. Ladies, if things bogged down here, we'll get you back in to rev them up again. Congratulations, thank you. All right, we are, having already called the roll, I'm sure everyone has figured out by now that this is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council on Friday, May 11th, and so we're going to move right to the first order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Without objection, the minutes are approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
And them too.
I would like to make an announcement. Anyone present for Beaumont Avenue Estes Street Lighting District, that may be present, the public hearing will be held on Wednesday, June 19th. Before starting the regular agenda, there are a couple items to be continued. Item number eight, a request from Council District 14 to continue that matter till May 18th.
All right, item eight is continued.
Item number 16, a request from Council District 11 to continue that matter till May 15th.
That will also be continued, and just, we do have one person who asked to be heard, Mr. Morde Allen, just so, I want to make sure you know that that item's being continued With respect to continuing it? Okay. Hold on for a minute, let me hold that on the desk while we, see if we can sort that out. But I believe it was Ms. Miskowski's office that asked to continue it.
That is correct.
Is that right? So she's not here today, which is why she had asked us to continue it until.
Tuesday, May 15th.
Tuesday, which is the next meeting. So can I ask somebody from staff to go talk to this gentleman and sort out what the issue is here? And you're not done yet.
Item number 21, a request that matter be continued till Tuesday, the 15th.
All right, we had a card on that item as well, so we'd like the gentleman who is confidential, Mr. L, to know that that's being continued until Tuesday as well.
Okay. I understand that Mr. Hernandez wishes to reconsider a matter from last Wednesday.
Yes, Mr. Hernandez, you have a, you want something to reconsider.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I ask that we reconsider item six of Wednesday's agenda for purposes of sending it to the city attorney's office.
All right, so I think the first thing we have to do, I'm advised by the clerk, is.
It's ICO and Council District 11, Councilmember Miskowski's office also concurs and asks that we do this.
There's a problem, it missed a step on its way to us that it needed to get to.
Right, that we need to complete.
So the first motion would be to suspend the rules in order for us to reconsider. So open the roll on suspending the rules. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Ten eyes. Okay, the rules are suspended. Now we have to formally vote to reconsider. Is that correct?
You can reconsider and refer to the city attorney in the same.
Right, so we need to vote to reconsider, and then we'll just refer it to the city attorney. So open the roll on reconsideration and referral. Close the roll, tabulate the vote. Ten eyes. That is done.
So that brings you to items number one through three on the regular agenda, which are items noticed for public hearing.
Right, we have no cards on any of those, but we will continue the hearing open and continue both the hearing and the ordinance to June 1st.
Items number four through 11 on the regular agenda are items for which public hearings have been held. Item number eight has been acted on.
All right, item number eight's been acted on. I have two cards on item 11 for which a hearing has been held. They both appear to be in support. So since the hearing has been held, I need a motion if we're going to hold an additional hearing. If we're not going to hold an additional hearing, don't make a motion. Okay. Looks for the moment as if we're not going to hold an additional hearing. So members of the council, any specials, items four through 11, with the exception of eight.
Madam President, item 10 on behalf of CD 14.
Okay, so Mr. Pacheco through Mr. Padilla has called item 10 special. Anybody else? Four, five, six, seven, nine, or 11? Seeing. Seeing...[599.39][599.39](Overlapping conversation) Okay, hang on. All right, we're ready then to open the roll on items four, five, six, seven, nine, and 11. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Ten eyes. My kind of vote.
Fourth with on 11, please.
Fourth with on 11. Next.
Items number 12 through 20 on the regular agenda are items for which public hearings have not been held. Item 16 has been acted on.
All right, I do not have cards on any of these except the ones we've already continued. Any specials? Members of the council, Ms. Walters, you had one. 15K. 13, Mr. Wax. 15K. Ms. Walters. Anybody else? 12, 14, 17, 18, 19, or 20? Seeing none, open the roll on 12, 14, 17, 18, 19, and 20. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Ten eyes. Those are approved. Next.
And that brings you back to the items called special. Item number 10 was called special by Councilmember Padilla from Mr. Pacheco.
Yeah, is Mr. Pacheco back yet?
Hold that on the desk.
Yeah, hold that on the desk. I think he's still in with the cheerleaders.
Item number 13 called special by Councilmember Wax.
Mr. Wax, item 13.
Well, the motions that are being noted and filed were motions asking the Department and all to update us on the status of the debt which is owed to the Department of Water and Power to tune of almost $200 million, and the recommendation is to ask the DWP to provide monthly status reports. Okay, but where are we? Is there someone here that can tell us what the motion's really asked to be done, and that is to tell us what the status is and what the prognosis is or the predictions for... I mean, this is $190 million to the ratepayers, an additional $10 million at minimum to the general fund.
They're coming.
Aha. Tell us the truth. Where are we and what can we expect, and what do we have to do to protect the city's interest?
Okay, my name is Bob Rozanski. I'm the Assistant CFO with DWP. What you had requested from the Department was for us to look into the possibility of obtaining a letter of credit with the California Department of Water Resources to protect our ratepayers, and in addition, to provide you with an update on the amounts that are due the Department for sales that were made to the Power Exchange and the ISO, or the Independent System Operator. Maybe it'd be helpful to just kind of walk you through chronologically what has taken place. I think it'd be helpful in sorting out where we are. Prior to the energy situation and the state becoming a crisis, the Department sold energy, excess energy throughout the western United States at prevailing market prices, including sales to both the Independent System Operator as well as the Power Exchange. On or about the middle of December of 2000, when it became apparent that the situation had developed into a crisis within the state, the Department's Board implemented a California First Policy wherein all of our sales of excess generation were being made on a first priority basis to the state under emergency conditions, including during times of rolling blackouts. DWP's sales to the Independent System Operator and the Power Exchange are secured by receivables from various entities that purchased energy from the Independent System Operator and the Power Exchange, including Southern California Edison Company, Pacific Gas and Electric Company, primarily those two entities, as well as other folks that had purchased energy from the ISO and PX. In December, January 2001 timeframe, Southern California Edison and Pacific Gas Electric defaulted on payments that were due to the ISO and the Power Exchange. And DWP immediately ceased doing business with the ISO and PX, and to date, since that time, we have not sold any of... Or any energy to those two entities. That was on or about the middle of January 2001. Altogether, the Power Exchange and the Independent System Operator owe us $180 million, all of which is currently past due. We believe that ultimately, based on conversations with our bankruptcy council, that we ultimately will receive payment. However, because of the bankruptcy filings by both the PX, Power Exchange, and Pacific Gas and Electric, it appears that we will not be paid for some time. We don't know how long. Nevertheless, we have retained bankruptcy counsel to protect our ratepayers, and they are also advising us matters related to the two bankruptcies. Our claims to these... Against these two entities are on the same footing as those of unsecured creditors, but ahead of shareholders' claims. At this point, we have been keeping our bond rating agencies informed of the developments, and they are aware that we're owed $180 million, and that any delay and/or non-payment of the amounts that are owed to us will not adversely affect our strong bond ratings, nor will it cause us to raise retail electric rates. Our financial position remains strong. On or about January of 2001, the state legislature approved AB 7X. This bill essentially authorized the California Department of Water Resources to purchase energy on behalf of the investor-owned utilities customers, retail customers. And that bill also authorized an initial appropriation of some $400 million for that purpose. To date, I think they've actually appropriated in excess of $5 billion to purchase energy on behalf of the IOU's retail customers. Since mid-January, all of our excess energy sales has been to the California Department of Water Resources, and generally, our policy has been cost. We take all of our costs for producing the energy, and then we add a markup of 15 percent. Generally, that has been well below the prevailing market price for energy... Prices for energy since that time. To date, we have sold approximately $310 million of energy to the state since mid-January, and we've been paid approximately $257 million. Currently, the CDWR owes us approximately $53 million, and we're expecting $33 million payment today. When the state... The legislature initially implemented AB 7X, the California Department of Water Resources had difficulty purchasing energy from third parties, and so, in order to assure the third parties that they would get paid in light of the situation with the ISO and PX situation, they had secured a letter of credit to back the sales. DWP was able to secure $104 million of a $400 million letter of credit for the first $104 million of sales that we made to CDWR. But that letter of credit has since been exhausted because we were paid the $104 million that it was designed to secure. With the passage of AB 1X, the California Department of... Assembly Bill 1X, the California Department of Water Resources implemented the standard, what they call WSCC billing procedures for all sales that are made to the CDWR. What that means is that you sell energy to the state, you invoice every 30 days once a month, and then you're paid within 20 days upon receipt of invoice by CDWR. That's just a standard procedure that's in effect throughout the western United States. Immediately, the Department requested that, since we were... Up until that time, although we had the letter of credit securing $104 million, that had been exhausted, and we instructed our folks to begin billing the CDWR on a daily basis for energy purchase to ensure that we got our money very quickly and to mitigate our exposure, since there was no longer any letter of credit that was in place. At some point, once AB 1X was passed, the CDWR indicated they would no longer be providing letters of credit and that we would move to the standard billing procedure, and that the letter of credit was too costly and it was unnecessary, since ABX, in effect, entitled them to collect the cost of energy purchases they were making on behalf of the IOUs directly from the retail customers of the IOUs, coupled with the fact that they were going to be able to issue bonds to secure some of the payments and also sort of levelize the cost of energy that had been purchased or that had been secured under the long-term contracts. DWP was still concerned and said, "We need to have some sort of arrangement beyond just being paid every 30 days because we're making substantial sales to the CDWR, and we cannot accept the exposure levels that were involved." We were successful in negotiating a favorable credit invoicing procedure with them, wherein today, we are billing the CDWR twice a month, every 15 days, and we're paid within 10 days. And we did this in order to mitigate, once again, our exposure. I'm not sure that anyone else has such favorable billing procedures. Our board, in addition, has instructed us that to the extent that the CDWR does not pay us on time, consistent with this new procedure that we've negotiated, that we immediately cease making sales to the CDWR. To date, all of our cash receipts from CDWR have been timely, with the exception of one that happened within a week or two ago, and it just so happened on a day that our board was meeting. And so, we immediately went to the board and indicated to them that the CDWR had stated that they would be paying us in accordance with the standard procedures that were in effect for others. Apparently, there was change of personnel in the area that involves invoicing, and they were not fully aware of the specific terms that we had negotiated with them. We reminded them of the terms and indicated that we are under strict policy guidelines to cease doing business with the state and to avoid any issues surrounding that, that we'd like to get paid immediately. They immediately paid us a subsequent day. We have since followed up with a letter to them just to make sure it's clear to them what our procedure is so that any misunderstandings like this don't happen in the future. And that's essentially where I think we are with the process.
Tell me your name again.
My name is Bob Rozanski.
I want to compliment you on your... The quality of your report. I think others could take a good example from... It's one of the most thorough and comprehensible also that I've... On a complicated and important subject, I want to compliment you.
Thank you.
Going back to the 180 or 90 million?
It's 180.
The $180 million that's still outstanding. You said that our counselors tell us that we are going to get full payment. We're going to get payment. The question is, is it just simply when we're going to get payment, or is it a question also whether we get full payment?
I think both of those questions exist. I will defer to Kell Johansson. He's with the City Attorney's Office. He's representing us in the matters.
Good morning. Kell Johansson, Deputy City Attorney. What I'd like to point out, if I could, is that as far as the discussion relating to the CDWR and our current ongoing procedures, it's the City Attorney's opinion that that is not subject to a closed hearing. But we are currently involved in bankruptcy litigation as it relates to the California Power Exchange and PG&E. So, if we're going to move into those areas, I would request of the council that we consider going into closed session so we could advise you fully on developments as it relates to litigation.
I don't know... You know me, I think all these things should be in public, but at minimum, I do want to know the status, because that is important to know where we're at with that $190 million. So, if we have to go into private session, I would prefer that rather than not finding out anything. I don't know why, though, but...
Yeah, but you could, couldn't you, advise us on the status of the bankruptcy litigation? I mean, the last... There can't be anything secret about the fact that we're still jockeying over who's owed what.
Sure. I think what I can say in response to your question, and not go into strategy or matters that are currently being considered as to how we'll be pursuing our claim, there are two bankruptcies, the Cal PX and the PG&E bankruptcy. We are on the Participants Committee for the California Power Exchange bankruptcy, which means usually it's entitled the Creditors Committee, but given the unique structure of the Cal PX, they're terming it the Participants Committee. But we are on that committee, and what we're doing is attempting to get through our representation and through the bankruptcy process, a full accounting. And why that's necessary is, in general, though, we know we're owed approximately $64 million from the Cal PX. The Cal PX is a pass-through, if you will. We sell to the Cal PX, they turn and sell to other third parties. Given the tariff, which is the FERC document which controls transactions with the PX, the identities of those parties aren't known to us, and we can't know those identities absent a court order. So, we're pursuing that to find out who is on the receiving end of our energy sales to the tune of approximately $64 million.
Excuse me for interrupting you one second. To put that in plain English, we don't know how much of our energy went to PG&E.
No, I know that, yeah.
I know, you know that.
I mean, I understand.
But I'm not sure anybody listening to the television knows that.
I understand that.
Okay. There are a number of litigations that are currently... One before the state and also before the bankruptcy courts to try and recover monies that are due the Cal PX. For example, when Governor Davis commandeered what were termed the long-term contracts that PG&E and Edison owed... When they defaulted in the PX, the governor commandeered those, took those over for the state. The state doesn't obviously get those for free. There has to be a determination as to how much those are worth, and that's currently in litigation pending before a state board. There's also a pool performance bond, which in the event of a default in the PX market was supposed to be paid, that hasn't been paid. My understanding is for each of the two markets, in the Cal PX, there's $20 million bond for each of those, and the official Participants Committee is pursuing litigation to recover that money to bring it back into the PX. In addition, there's various other parties who are jockeying for a piece of the pie, if you will, the trade committees, Perot Systems, for example, people who supply telephone, data services, hardware. They're seeking to get money from the estate from the PX, and there's negotiations going on with them to determine perhaps if there's a buyout figure for them. Also, issues such as stay bonuses for important personnel who we believe can keep the PX running long enough to get an accounting as to who is owed what. There's motions pending before the bankruptcy court to see how much money, if at all, they'll be given as bonuses to keep them available, to keep the company up and running. My understanding is that the way the bankruptcy council, our outside council, which we've retained, has described the matter, our claims against the PX are really claims in trust that they're holding that in trust for us, for the true parties that actually owe us. If it turns out to be PG&E and Edison, which, based on all knowledge that we have, it's the likely two parties, they have significant assets in the state and which to satisfy judgments or obligations owed to the Department and other participants. So, while the PX is a pass-through, if you will, the parties on the other end holding the bag have significant and considerable assets, which, if they were to be liquidated, I think there's a pretty compelling argument that it would be sufficient to satisfy the debts.
And what's the differential between the 63 and the other 117?
The other amount is owed to the Department for sales of energy and ancillary services to the California Power Exchange. Even though the Power Exchange is the market, the California ISO is also required to procure energy and ancillary services. We have sold energy and ancillary services to them, have stopped, but they nevertheless still owe us considerable amounts. The ISO has not gone into bankruptcy as of yet. But again, the ISO would be a pass-through similar to the PX, so there's a determination that needs to be made how much of the approximately $117 million the ISO owes us can be attributed to Edison and how much to PG&E. And as you're aware, PG&E is currently in bankruptcy, so that may have implications as to recovering our debt, what is owed us from the ISO while PG&E's in bankruptcy. We are monitoring that. We have attempted to gain participation in the official creditors committee. The U.S. trustee denied us access to that. However, with the official Participants Committee in the PX and another unofficial organization, we are getting information on a regular basis and attempting to be heard and often... As often as we can.
Thank you. I do think when the time... When you believe it's appropriate to go into executive session to give you directions, I mean, we obviously want to take the step, every step possible, to secure repayment of this, both in the full amount and in a timely way, so you should let us know when you think you need... And I assume you're going on that direction to begin with, that your fundamental direction is to get back for the city all of possible and as quickly as possible.
Yes, absolutely.
Ms. Chik.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I am pleased with the discussion that my motion has generated, and much of the information that I requested has been discussed already. I'm simply... I'm simply rising to ensure that we're going to have regular, ongoing reports going forward through committee to council. One of the points of the motion was not only to be updated, but to share the information with the public, with our ratepayers. There's so much mystery, secrecy, and ongoing change that, in this very important situation that impacts everyone in the state and in Los Angeles, I think it's very important to constantly be bringing forward updated, the most recent, updated, factual, accurate information. And if it's bad news, bad news needs to be shared as well. But I'm very pleased that that isn't the case for our DWP and for our city at this point. In terms of the upcoming summer, or the summer that seems to be upon us, and I think we're all aware that the temperature in this room is a little bit on the warm side, but could you touch on that and just discuss briefly both plans that the department and the city have for how we are going to deal with the increased need for energy in the summer and how we're going to conserve? And anything else in terms of the state issue about the summer and how it affects us?
Let me just caution you as you do this, and that the item on the agenda, we need to have -- actually, it's a wonderful question, and we need to have a serious discussion about that, but we haven't actually noticed that for the public. So I think if you could -- yeah, about the conservation issues, but just if you could -- the core question that Ms. Chik asked is, are we going to have enough energy given this crisis? And that, I think, is sufficiently close that we ought to get an answer to that.
Yes, I believe that we should be in good shape as far as having sufficient resources to serve our retail load. There may be some question as to whether we have any excess and to what extent, and a lot of it's contingent on the type of weather that we have. If it's a real hot summer, we may not have much in a way of excess available to offer to the rest of the state. One of the items that our board did pass was a conservation program, and I know that has yet become, I believe, before the City Council. But that may also serve to help reduce the level of consumption within our service territory that could make available some additional energy for the rest of the state.
Okay. Mr. Savornic.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the council. I too would like to commend both the DWP staff member, Bob, and City Attorney. Many of us have been sitting around here for quite a few years, and that was a very concise and very informative presentation. One of the things to which I am very concerned is the category in which we find our debt, and that is $180 million in unsecured -- we're an unsecured creditor. And I think we all are fooling ourselves if we really don't understand what that means. That means that the likelihood of getting any of that $180 million is very unlikely. I don't care what anyone says, I don't care where we are in line, if you are an unsecured creditor and you believe that you find some consolation being before a stockholder, that is no consolation whatsoever. The only folks that are going to make out in this whole endeavor is a secured creditor, of which we are not. And so, I don't like to predict things, but if we get a dime on the dollar for the money that we are owed, I am going to be very, very surprised. On top of that, we have to understand is that on that $180 million, I'm sure there is no interest accruing, is there?
I'm sure that would be a matter that the court would have to resolve, but at this point, there is no interest accruing.
Even if we are making 5% on this money, we would be losing about $9 million a year in interest, which is $4 million, $4.5 million every six months, which is $2.25 million every three months. So you can imagine how much money we're losing monthly, quarterly, biannually, and annually for this debt not being paid, money that could be used all across the city for a multitude of programs and services. It is my grim assessment that by the time this is litigated, by the time this even sees a resolution, it's going to be three, or four, or possibly five years down the road, I guarantee you that we will not see more than 10 cents on the dollar. What concerns me even more is that, in good faith, the City of Los Angeles, in order to be good neighbors to the rest of the state, I believe is going to be stuck with a very high price tag, that fortunately, we are in such good financial shape, that I don't believe it would affect the ratepayers of the City of Los Angeles. If it is, I'd like to hear some reassurances from the staff that it's not. And also, what gives me a little bit more trouble is that in regards to some of the debt, the $64 million that we provided to -- and correct me, was it the ISO or the other one? Was it the ISO?
The $64 million would be attributable to the CalPX.
Thank you. I recall again, and I will reiterate, when the former general manager, who is now the czar of California Energy, and let us all remember what happened to the last czar, is that he sat there and said that the sales that the City of Los Angeles made to that entity was 100% Southern California Edison. Sat there and said it. And now I hear, last time, and now I hear again today, that we may not know who the creditors are for that $64 million. And that is greatly disturbing to me. And so, I appreciate the presentation we had today, and I know that we pay our attorneys and our staff to be optimistic. But we also deal in a real world here, folks, and if we think that we're going to get more than $18 million out of that 180, if that, I think we are very mistaken.
Maybe the question is how much it'll be worth by the time we get it. That they can't do anything about. All right, there's nobody else who wishes to be heard. Thank you, gentlemen. I want to concur that that was an excellent presentation. Well, I believe Mr. Wax suggested they come back as soon as they have something to tell us. I can assure you, as Chair of the committee, that I will be asking on a regular basis whether they have something to tell us. Monthly, you want it monthly?
Thing here is from them to report on a monthly basis, but in addition to that, if we have to go into an executive session for strategy to try to maintain our best position, we should be able to --
Right.
And at some point, we're going to have to have that discussion, because I think one of the problems of the discussion we just had is that while I respect my good colleague, Mr. Savornic, we got one person's, in public, for public record, one person's assessment of our legal status, and then our attorneys haven't given us their assessment of it, because they want to go into executive session for that. And we now really are perhaps a little less -- we're more confused than when we started, because we don't really know if what their response would be, for example, to Mr. Savornic's assessment. I would like to know that. I also agree that should be public knowledge, but I think in the appropriate manner, I'd like to get the whole picture before -- now I go out of here only knowing part of it, without having heard them give us their analysis.
Let me suggest -- all right, Mr. -- all right, hold on one second. I think the -- let's first agree that we are going to have monthly reports, in any case.
Bimonthly. Wasn't it every two weeks?
Semi-monthly. Actually, I believe the original was monthly. I just want to point out to everybody that not only does the litigation evolve as bankruptcy litigation always does, but as you know, the situation in Sacramento is evolving faster than the bankruptcy litigation. And so, the context in which we would be developing strategy may be shifting even as we speak. So if I'm hearing from you, Mr. Wax, I request that we schedule an executive session for it.
I'd like to move that.
I would suggest we not do it today.
And we do it next week.
But we could do it sometime next week. Mr. Hernandez wishes to be heard.
I didn't want to have to speak on this item, because I was excused. I was not supposed to be here today, and I realize if I leave, I break a quorum, and I'm supposed to be someplace else. But when Mr. Wax brought up that other perspective, members of the council, I think that, again, whether we get $18 million, $36 million, or the full $180 million, is a question that has to be answered, but not so much as the question as to -- none of us predicted this crisis, and the reality is, we've made a windfall on it. We've been selling our excess energy, and we've been making money in the situation that's been a hardship for other parts of the state. My real questions would lie more in how secure are we on the future? I mean, are we going to be able to maintain, and again, I heard that we're going to be able to maintain power for our constituents and keep their rates down, and are any future sales pretty much guaranteed payment upfront? I mean, how are we doing this from this perspective on? What happened in the past is already done, and now we're dealing with legal challenges for it. But I can't help but remind myself that Mr. Wax was asking for that other perspective, that we're doing much better than everybody else as a city. We did have excess to sell, and that's why it's called excess. It is protecting our ratepayers. And the reality is, are our current sales secured in such a way that we don't have to deal with this continued question?
As it stands now, we are paid every two weeks, and -- excuse me, we invoice roughly twice a month, every two weeks, and we are paid within 10 days. And our policy is that to the extent we're not paid on time, that we will cease doing business with the state. We have had ongoing discussions with them, based on the last misunderstanding that we had when they were late a day or two. And also, I understand a letter is going out to them, another letter is going out to the head of that particular entity, to officially notify them that we will cease doing business with them in the event that we are not paid timely.
Right. And to this date, though, the only outstanding beside -- I guess, we got like 24 days worth of arrears in billing?
Right, yes. Right now, we're owed roughly, I'll say, $55 million, of which 33 should come in today.
Okay. That's the current state, besides the 180. So we're not in a position to get ourselves in that same position we were in before.
That's correct. The only thing I would cautious you on, and we are monitoring this on a daily basis, is that, and it's hard to predict what's going to happen in the summer and where prices are going to go, but the last couple of days, for example, we did sell roughly $5 million to the state each day. And so, you know, if you just run those numbers out and you assume that we were to sell $5 million for 15 days and we got paid 10 days later, that means we have roughly 25 days outstanding, which would be $125 million. So our exposure, if we were to sell $5 million a day, assuming that we had the excess available in the hot summer months, and the prices were at the high prices that they are today, then we could have exposure of about $125 million, even with the bimonthly or the every-15-day billing cycle.
Okay. Now, what if we didn't sell to the state? What would be happening with that excess power?
If we didn't sell to the state, we would be selling that power to other entities that needed power. And that could be throughout the Western United States.
But we'd be selling it either way.
That's correct.
If it's excess.
Mm-hmm. I mean, we can't store it forever.
That's correct.
Okay.
I just want to point out to everybody, the reason it's warm in here is that we're attempting to conserve energy. Mr. Savornic for the second time.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I was starting to wonder if whether or not the DWP was giving us a precursor of what the council chambers was going to be like, for those of you who are here after July. Either that or somebody's trying to tell me what my afterlife is going to be like. One of the questions that I did ask DWP was whether or not if we -- worst-case scenario is that if we were to recover a fraction of the $180 million that is owed the City of Los Angeles for our sales, how does that expose our ratepayers in the future to having to absorb those costs?
Yeah. At this point, when, you know, it's hard to predict what's going to happen two, three, four, five years out and beyond, but when you look at our financial position today, and a lot of it's contingent on where gas prices go, as you probably know, the gas market has been very volatile, and the prices have just been exorbitant compared to historical levels. But as it stands now, we are in a strong financial position, and I can't envision in the next, say, three to five years, us being in a situation where we'd have to raise rates, unless there was something that was very abnormal that happened, or gas prices just continued to skyrocket and stayed up at levels that were just very high.
Okay. So based upon the information that you have now, that the non-resolution of what happens to this $180 million, at least for a couple of years down the road, will not have any type of adverse effect on the ratepayers of the city?
That's right. Non-payment of the $180 million in and of itself should not have any adverse impact on electric rates within our service territory.
Okay. What is the entity that is guaranteeing the purchases of the surplus power that we would provide now? I missed that.
Yeah. Essentially, what's happening now under Assembly Bill 1X, and it hasn't been fully implemented, but the California Department of Water Resources has the authority to set what the revenue requirements are, in order for them to make all payments to the third-party suppliers and collect those directly from the retail customers of the investor-owned utilities. I know that the state legislature and the governor, I believe, signed yesterday a bill that would -- and it's related to this 1X amendment to that bill, that will authorize the issuance of, I think, $13 billion, $14 billion of bonds. So you have that piece, and then you have another matter that's sort of going through the CPUC, wherein, I believe, the CDWR had indicated what part of the retail revenue pie that they needed in order to make the purchases, or to make payment on all the purchases they were making on behalf of the customers. And there was some question as to how much would go to CDWR versus how much would stay with the investor-owned utilities. And that's being resolved.
Okay. Also, in regards to the amount of indebtedness that is owed us versus other creditors that you may know of, are we at the top of the list of those that are owed money to in regards to a dollar value? Are we in the middle? Do other entities, are they owed more than we are?
Well, I did -- you know, that information's hard to obtain, but I did receive sort of a scrambled list, if you will, that had all the people that were owed monies, and then it had the dollar amounts, but they were all scrambled, so you didn't know who was owed what.
So you'd connect the lines?
Yeah, so you'd have to figure out who was owed what on your own. But based on that list, assuming it's accurate, because it came from those entities, that, you know, we certainly aren't the top on the list. There's several way above us, in terms of the level of sales.
So on the scrambled list, you see greater numbers than $180 million in the right column?
Yes. I can't recall exactly what the highest number was, but I thought it was in the 300 range, 300 million range.
Thank you. So where we are at this moment is, we're going to schedule an executive session for us, for you to brief us on the strategy, since everybody wants to know. And by the time we get that done next week, who knows? The whole world may have changed. And in the meantime, the item, as it appears on the council agenda, is essentially to thank you for today's report, and note and file it, and welcome you back in 30 days, just for an ongoing status report. So open the roll on item, whatever this was, 13. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, that's done. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, members of the council, we have three more items, and I know a number of us expect to be over at Park Center at 1:00, so I hope, and some of us may want to eat. I hope that we will be able to get through these reasonably expeditiously. I believe the next one is item 10. Now, just hold on, you know? If we hadn't taken so long on this, we'll get them done. Item 10 called special by Mr. Pacheco. And let me just take note, as you're starting, before I start your time, that we do have some cards on this item, but it is one where a hearing has -- the hearing has already been held in committee. Go.
Madam President, colleagues, wanted to just do a friendly amendment to the report. On page one, there was an oversight, it included Council District 9, and there was an oversight that shouldn't include Council District 14 as part of the two offices that represent downtown. On page three, there's an oversight committee that's going to do some work. Simply request that the Oversight Committee maintain on their mailing list notification to the bids in the downtown area when they meet, so that they proactively send out information in the downtown area when they meet, so that they proactively send out information to the bids as they meet. And those are the two amendments to the report that I wanted to make.
They sound like reasonable amendments. Is there any objection to those amendments? Ms. Walters?
I have no objection.
Wait, your mic's not on. Okay, there we go.
And it really is truly an oversight that 14 wasn't included, because I thought they were automatically there. The one thing I think we should make explicit, though, in terms of the bids being notified of the oversight committees, that if they choose to come, the notification does not carry voting powers with it. And that should just be explicitly stated, so there's no misunderstanding.
Okay. Open the roll on item 10, as amended. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That's approved. Item...
Would like to mention for the record, item number 16 was continued to May 15.
Was continued, correct.
Item 15K called special by Councilmember Walters.
Item 15K, and Ms. Walters, I anticipate your question, and let me just, I'm going to call on you, but...
Okay.
I think I am anticipating your comment and your question, because I listen carefully every time you bring it up. This, as I understand it, this particular run is to raise money for breast cancer, and that's, even though it looks like it's the rich guys from the entertainment industry, it's the foundation to, that would have to pay the fee, and otherwise, they can give it to the breast cancer people.
Right. I'm very familiar with the organization, support their work. I think their work is much needed. My concern is that we're going to waive fees in the amount of $60,000 for this. I would rather see us write a check to the foundation for $60,000, and we know they'll have the money, and we'll continue the work that is so necessary to be done. I'm not at all opposed to the organization or the work that they do. I do think that $60,000 to close off some streets so that this run can occur is excessive, and the money would be better spent going directly to the organization.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ridley Thomas?
Madam President, members of the council, I simply wish to rise to encourage all members to do as we have for the past seven years, which is to support this rather extraordinary activity. It does a tremendous amount of good in an area of research that is lacking with respect to resources, and all of us know how important it is to advance medical research in the area of breast and ovarian cancer. This is a way to popularize that issue. It is one of the best events taking place in our city that combines a cause that is important with an activity that is fun, and it would seem to me that it is wholly appropriate for us to be supportive of this enterprise, as we are both advancing good public policy and at the same time communicating in a very personal way that we care about that issue. I ask for your unanimous support.
Well, we are now ready to vote. Open the roll on item 15K. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
9 ayes, 1 no.
Well, it was close. It's approved. That brings us, I believe, to the end of the agenda, except for public comment.
Madam Chair, I know we just took a vote on the previous item. I just wanted to point out that fees have gone up for some reason.
Oh, yeah, quite significantly, apparently.
Quite significantly, and they have to deal with DOT. Something's happened...
That we need to check up on.
That we should be checking on, because I'm finding out that my fee, for the same events I've done before...
Right.
The fees have gone up like 500 to 1,000 percent, and I think we should find out what's really going on.
I do, too, but not at the expense of holding this item. Okay, public comment. This is the time for comments on items not on today's agenda, but within the purview of the City Council. We have Mr. L.
I'd like to wish everybody a happy Mother's Day this weekend, and I just would like to speak on some other item that was on the agenda. I turned in a card and I did not get to speak, but I would just like to notice my observations about the construction work that is going on across the street and the next block, where these people that did the construction left metal spikes sticking out of the sidewalk in such a way as that a person that's walking by there could trip and fall flat on their face. So that's why I wanted to speak about giving permits to construction people that are not doing the job in a lawful manner.
Thank you. That closes the public comment period, and what else do we have before us?
Motion for posting a referral.
Without objection, they are posted and referred.
Councilmember Pacheco requests to be excused.
Refer that gentleman's comment to the department.
Certainly.
That is a serious, good lawsuit in the making there, too.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Conrad.
Councilmembers request to be excused, and council attendants, Councilmember Pacheco requests to be excused on May 23 to arrive at 10:30. A motion is required.
Mr. Savornic moves.
The desk is clear.
All right. We have adjourning motions? Yes, I have one, too. Let me start by asking the council to adjourn in memory of John J. Baer, who was a resident of West LA. He was born in Breslau, Germany in 1917, has been in this country for a very long time. He was a prominent attorney specializing in international and business law, and maintained a practice that included a number of members of the consular corps. He authored a book about his memoirs as a refugee from Nazi Germany and his life in Bolivia and Los Angeles, was very proud of this book, Witness for a Generation, gave numerous readings and talks throughout the United States. He was a longtime member of the Wilshire Boulevard Temple and the Jewish Club of 1933, also the founder of the American-Israel Chamber of Commerce and the Foreign Trade Association, and was active with the Jewish Home for the Aging, did a fair amount of legal work for the state of Israel, and was involved in a number of other organizations. He's survived by his wife, two daughters, a son, five grandchildren, and two great-grandchildren, and they all miss him a lot. Mr. Fuhr. Mr. Hernandez.
Madam Chair, members of the council, I ask that we adjourn in memory of Pasqual Reyes. Mr. Reyes came before this council on several occasions. He was an elderly gentleman who represented the Community Advisory Board for the Pico Union CRA area, and Pasqual always came, he spoke in Spanish, he was very much a participant. He was the chairman of that committee. He passed away last Friday because of health complications, and I just ask that, we adjourn his name, and I'll get all the details to the clerk.
Mr. Savornic.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the council, I would like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Nina Antica Mardasic, who passed away on May 5. She was born April 21, 1903, in the village of Comisia, Island of East, on the Dalmatian coast of Croatia, was a 55-year resident of San Pedro. She is preceded in her death by her husband. She is survived by her sons, Dr. Andrew and Dr. Matthew Mardasic, daughter Ina, sister, nine grandchildren, 12 great-grandchildren, and services were held yesterday in San Pedro. Also, that we adjourn in memory of Nicolina Brullo. She was born February 25, 1914, in Sinisi, Italy, and was a 41-year resident of San Pedro. She is survived by her son Frank and wife Angela, daughter Sarah, and husband Al Galetti, many grandchildren and great-grandchildren, and her services were also held yesterday.
Call the roll. We are adjourned. Between the police run and the Mother's Day walk, everybody's going to have a happy, active weekend. Happy Mother's Day, everybody.[1765.42]